Let's call our meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, item B, conference review report. Dr. Markley.
Yeah, at the retreat, we had talked about our pay scales and things that we wanted to do related to those pay scales. And as sort of a follow-up to that, Bruce came in about a week ago, sat down with Mary Hazel, John Wellmers and I, and we started trying to explain our pay scales. To say they're complicated would probably be an understatement, especially when you look at things like the fact that certain levels have been frozen for five years. So you can look at levels that are frozen. And in order to get to where you guys wanted to be at the retreat, after meeting with Bruce, I just sort of thought that we needed to put together a group and compensation review committee, for lack of a better term, to look at all of those pay scales. And if we're gonna make changes, let's take our time and do it right and not try to be hasty about making those changes and bring forward a recommendation before budget process next year. So I would ask Mr. Chairman, since Bruce went through a similar process with the county, if he would be one of the representatives on that committee?
I think you'd be willing to serve, don't you?
Yeah, sure.
You just need one member from the...
One or two board members.
Would anyone else like to serve on that?
I'd be willing to serve.
Mr. Higgins and Mr. Shale?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd be Mary Hazel and Dr. Wellmers will work with us on that.
Anyone else on any of that? Because I know several of you have...
We could attend if we weren't on the committee.
Yes.
But I know Ms. Eastep and Ms. Coe, well, you both have financial backgrounds. I didn't know if you'd like to...
I'd be happy to be on there as well.
Okay.
I don't think I can afford the time commitment, but I will try to attend.
Great.
Okay. Sure, night, Ms. Cavill. It's open to any of us, but we'll have those three as our representatives, and Ms. Eastep, Mr. Shale, and Mr. Higgins.
And we'll try to find a regular time for everyone so you can put it in your calendar long-term.
That is?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Item 10, consensus items. Item A, personnel dependency. Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
May for approval?
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, approved. Item B, change of school assignment. Appendix A, Dr. Holliday.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ask that you approve these routine releases of students to neighboring school districts that their parents are employed in those particular districts.
Oh, for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Item 11, old business. Item A, naming the new elementary school located in the northeast. Appendix G, Dr. Markley.
All right, just for, as Wayne has pointed out, you're technically not naming the school tonight. We're gonna select a name and leave it out there for a six-month comment period. So if you, Ms. Adams sent out a Google Doc to look to basically have you rank what were the top five suggestions. Remember, we had decided non-geograph, I mean geographical as the representation. The number one board choice was Porter's Neck Elementary School. So I would put that name out there for discussion. If that's what the board wants to go with, we'll leave that out there for the six-month comment period, and it'll be on the agenda in six months for approval.
So you don't need a motion tonight. You just need a consensus of the board?
I need a consensus, yep.
I support Port City. I'm sorry, Porter's Neck.
I do, I do too, because I think when, when people speak about areas of the county, when you say Porter's Neck, it at least kind of gets it to a generalized location, like Ogden and other, Mortal Grove, I mean...
Yes, thank you.
What does it back up to, Mr. Anderson? What, their property, what's it back up to? Page's Creek?
The nearest body of water is Page's Creek, yes. But if you said it's Page's Creek, I wouldn't have any idea of where that was, because I don't, I didn't grow up up there.
Right.
I wouldn't either, and I lived there.
So I mean, I think, you know, but if you say, if you say Porter's Neck, I mean, I think most people would know where that's at.
Does everyone understand historically where Porter's Neck comes from?
It's a plantation.
Would you tell us?
I'll be more than happy.
I thought you would.
He's gonna tell us the rest of the story, yes.
Years ago, there was a Porter family, and neck was a geographic description of like a connecting piece of land that connected two different bodies. And they were talking about water, because you have Fudge's Creek, Page's Creek. Also, the intercoastal waterway see was not there back in those days. That, they hadn't, hadn't been dug yet. So to me, it's interesting, because I've had people ask me where, you know, because having grown up here, that when you think of that end of the county, you always thought of Porter's Neck. But no one, you know, stopped to think, but it was a geographic term, the neck part, but the Porter's part was a, a family name. So that's it.
Okay, is that all you need from us on that?
That's it. Just in six months, you will formally, unless there's an overwhelming public outcry that you want to hear.
I would like to ask, on the second timestamp, I'm assuming these, these rankings from right, from left to right, who doesn't understand how to rank something from one to five, or one to, one to five? We've got two, two, five, five, one. Is that, is that one person that's ranked that?
Are you calling somebody out?
I'm calling somebody out. You, you go one through five, not, I'm looking at it thinking, who on earth did that? Was that you, Ed?
She just accused you of doing that.
What came in second, because I can't read that.
Did you hear me?
If you're looking at that, Ed's water would've been said.
Oh.
One thing I do want...
I just thought it was strange. I don't, I don't know if we did that to stack the deck or what we were doing with that, but I think that's...
Are you gonna give us a grade on how we...
Interesting. Well, I don't know. I just, somebody didn't follow directions. That's all I can say.
That's not unusual.
Put that down as a first.
It was not me. It was not me.
One thing I do want to share with the board...
I have a smiley face. I have a smiley face.
That I want to share with the board, and just as a matter of paying respect, so to speak, because I know that it had been, the consensus was to go with the geographic location. But I did receive, and I told them I would share the information with you, and I want to do that, did receive a packet of information from the American Legion Post Ten. Because I had been in communication with several of them, because I attend their meetings, I'm a member over there and so forth, and I knew that there was a feeling of naming the school after a private Harold Shepherd, who grew up in that area of the county, graduated from New Hanover High School in nineteen fifty, and then immediately, he was seventeen years old, immediately joined the Army. And they needed manpower quickly, so to make a long story short, he immediately went to Korea at seventeen. And they were supposed to go to Okinawa for more training, but went straight to Korea. And within a matter of days, was engaged in a battle that he was captured in. And there was a, his best friend was a gentleman named Charlie Smith, who watched all of this unfold and couldn't do anything to help him. He was, that private Shepherd was the only one to survive the battle that he was in, but he was captured by the North Koreans and taken away at the age of seventeen. And if you can go online and research the Sun Tune Tunnel massacre, which was where, and Private Shepherd was in that group of one hundred and fifty American prisoners, where they were on a train heading north into Korea. And the Koreans stopped the train in the tunnel, gave them plates indicating they were gonna feed them, because they hadn't eaten in days. And as the hundred and fifty American soldiers got off the train, they lined them up, had a machine gun, killed every, you know, shot them. Several survived to tell the story about Private Shepherd at seventeen, and he was one of those that was killed. So they thought it would be appropriate that, you know, they, that was a suggestion, because I had told them that we were going with the geographic. And I didn't know, I'd asked Mr. Anderson, and I don't think there is, because I think New Hanover County lost, I think it was eleven soldiers from New Hanover County in Korea. But anyway, his was a little bit of a special case in that he was seventeen years old, and...
And you said he grew up up there.
Yeah, he's from that area. And the Shepherds, from what I understand, his relatives and his brother still in the area, I think he's a minister, from what I was told. But anyway, I just told them I would share that with the board, and my reason in doing so was really as a matter of respect to him and what he did at the age of seventeen. But then also, I didn't know, and I'd asked Mr. Anderson, and I don't think that's gonna be the case, that if there was any kind of a road or something, like in some of our schools, like off Edgewater Club Road, if there was a road going in, that that's something we might consider. But I don't think that's gonna be the case. But anyway, I just wanted to share that...
Why couldn't we name the road?
But I don't think there's gonna be, that we're gonna build a road, are we, Mr. Anderson? I think there was these developers...
Like a driveway type, isn't there something coming into the school?
Well, there, Mr. Anderson, could you enlighten us, other than Page's Creek being back there?
Yeah, we'll talk about Page's. Admit defeat. The, Edgewater, we purchased about eighteen, eighteen acres out of a hundred acres. The, the person, the developer, we purchased the twenty acres or eighteen acres from is planning a subdivision in the remaining approximately eighty acres. The road that comes off of Edgewater, that we will have one of our access drives off of, will be one of the main entrances into that subdivision. And so what I was explaining to Mr. Hayes is, I don't think it would be appropriate for the school board alone to, to name that road, but, you know, perhaps we could have some discussion with the developer and see if, if they would be interested in doing that.
Why can't we, if we're there first? I'm serious. If we're there first and we build a road, they're gonna add on to it.
Yeah, we're, we're only building a small piece of the road, just to get us to our driveway, and then they will be improving that and continuing it through their development. And it actually comes back out on the Edgewater, closer to the roundabout.
Well, it was just something I wanted to throw out.
I think, I think it would be maybe a little more of an honor, I guess you will, if, if you were, we were to incorporate that story somehow with the, with the school itself. You know, I think that would be an interesting, and a, and a good story for students to learn within the school. I mean, you know, you see the name of a, of a, of a street, and you may not necessarily connect the story to it, but I would...
It would be very patriotic.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would think that somehow incorporating that into that, that school's opening, or, you know, I don't know how you would...
Maybe the story, then posting it in the media center, so when the children are coming in.
Yes, there you go.
And I hope what you're seeing is what takes place yearly at Veterans Park, as far as, I hope all those students down there understand the name Anderson, Murray, Ashley, and Halliburton, who they were. I mean, I hope that's covered every year.
Well, but it's, it's important to, to carry on that tradition year to year, and, you know, and, I mean, naming a school is one thing, but the, but, you know, to tell that story and to connect it to the property and the, the area that they're in, I think is more meaningful.
There's nothing to say that we can't publish that, you know, and put that in a, in a frame, in the front of the school, you know, what's in, what's in the name.
The history and...
To explain it, yeah.
I mean, if you go to Wrightsboro, they, you know, they have the, they have quite a history. And if, you know, you, you go in and you see the, the time period and, and all of the, you know, changes that have happened. And that, that's something that anchors the, the school. So I would, I think it would be a great honor to somehow connect it with the school.
Well, something...
What's the gentleman's name again?
Pardon?
What, what's the gentleman's name?
Private Harold Shepherd.
You said there's still, there, he still has relatives living here?
Yeah, I was talking to some of the members of Post Ten, they said, yes, has a brother that's a minister. And that's the source I went, his, his best friend, well, we met him when, was a gentleman named Charlie Smith, who witnessed everything. He was in hiding, and he saw what happened, and then saw him being taken away and so forth. So he came here years later and looked at Shepherd's family up and met them, told them, you know, his, his memories of what had happened, the short time he, they were together. But he's, you know, seventeen years old. Didn't you make it as eighteen? Okay, next. Item twelve, under new business. Item A, upgrades to the sound system and scoreboard at Legion Stadium. Appendix A, Dr. Markley.
All right, we were approached by the Legion Stadium group about contributing to the upgrading of the sound system and scoreboards at Legion Stadium. This would be the main field, not the back baseball field. So what we're asking the board is to commit up to twenty-two thousand five hundred for that project, which would be our share. I would also suggest that we also put a caveat that if there's any ad, any ad revenue, that that would be repaid from that ad revenue before anybody realizes additional and profit off of that.
See, this is one thing that I can make a couple comments, and Ms. Nichols might want to make, because we're both on that Legion Stadium Committee. And it's one of the few times where, when you look at something where you can improve your facilities for a school, but yet get your money back, which the new school board they're talking about putting up, which would really be nice. I recommended they do it some years ago, when they had money left over from the artificial turf. But they, they really need to do something out there, and with the school board they're gonna have, it'll have a panel across the bottom where they can sell advertising. And so we can recoup our money, and then New Hanover's athletic budget can also make money, plus their, their soccer teams, you know, there's advertising that they could sell, so that then also that it would benefit their athletic budgets.
How are, who is going to oversee that, that part of the scoreboard, in terms of selling the advertisement and that type of thing?
Well, it's, it's owned by the city. Of course, you know, and the city's wanting to split this four ways, the county, the city, the school system, and the Hammerheads Soccer Team, professional soccer team. But when it comes to like Hammerheads, they would generate revenue for themselves when there's a soccer match there. But when Hanover, let's say there's a football game there, or soccer match, or whatever, that's Hanover's, and Hanover could sell the, the advertising, and, I mean, they would be in charge of it, not the city or anything.
No, what, what I mean is, who's going to be responsible for putting the advertisement on, on the actual, you know, school board, selling the advertisement, collecting the revenue? I'm just, I'm just wondering about that process.
I don't think mechanics of that have worked out yet.
You mean, who's gonna actually put it on the sign?
Yes, that's what I'm, I mean, are we gonna be responsible for that?
Hanover will. Whoever's, because there's a, all that's electronic, and they just put it in there, and what the ad is, how many times it'll scroll across, I mean, they do all that.
They were gonna work with the athletic director at Hanover to see, get some procedures in place, so.
But I'll tell you, there's no guarantee you're gonna, that you're gonna get your dollars back. But I would say that if we do sell advertising for the school, that it comes back to us to recoup our initial investments.
So you're not talking about, like, if the Hammerheads are selling advertising, we would get that back? It's just when Hanover is using it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that anywhere they would, that we could...
No, when the Hammerheads out there playing, all the ads would be stuff they have sold, and that they would, they would benefit from that.
I move for approval.
I'm not done.
Oh, yeah, but you can second it for discussion. You need to second it.
Is there second?
I'll second it for the discussion.
Now, discussion questions.
But so we don't have any idea of when, how long it will take us to recoup the, the initial investment? Because we don't have a, a schedule of fees or anything like that to...
I asked, I talked to Principal McAdams, and he was gonna meet with his athletic director. In the meeting that Mrs. Nichols and I attended, the Hammerheads seemed to be pretty knowledgeable of what this could bring in, and were very positive about it. So what I asked Mr. McAdams and Mr. Moore from Hanover to do is to meet with the Hammerhead people to get an idea so that they could get, and to be honest with you, I had forgotten about it. I gotta call them, and they're gonna get back with me.
Will we have to, this brings up an interesting dynamic. So is there someone that's going to oversee and ensure that whatever is being advertised is appropriate? I mean, would we have to come up with a policy?
Well, that may be something that we would have to look at.
Well, you would have to, you know, approve by the school.
I mean, I don't think we would want, you know, Hooters or something like that.
Well, but they have signs.
I'm just saying.
Depends on how it's gonna play.
But if it's something that the school system is approving more...
If we, just like the school has to approve the ads that go into our yearbook.
Yes.
Yeah, a yearbook, plus the signs they hang on their fields, on the fencing and so forth. You know, tobacco, alcohol, anything like that, that wouldn't be appropriate, wouldn't be considered. Hooters, you have...
But we have, we have, we have parameters in place.
Oh, yeah. And if you've ever been to a game at Legion Stadium, you cannot hear anything they're saying. So you can hear the music when they play it while they're practicing. Other than that, you can't hear anything.
Yeah, definitely a need for it. Mr. Shale?
I want to be sure I understood. What you're asking is twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and would that come out of a line item or fund balance, or where would that come from?
It's really the board's preference. We could, I would probably recommend that it come out of fund balance, but we're waiting your decision, and I would bring that in a amendment next month.
Okay, thank you. Then my, my other question was, in looking at the information in the packet, if, if I'm not mistaken, there's a contract between the city of Wilmington and the Hammerheads. So are we not, we're not entering into a, a contract, we're just providing money? And the advertising is just a stipulation, Dr. Markley, is what you're asking for, right?
Right. If we, if we can, I would suggest that you think of this twenty-two thousand as money you'll never get, but you might get back if you, if we can generate some advertising revenue. But just like anything else, it's twenty-two thousand dollar expenditure. And look at that number first. The only stipulation I would say is if we're able to recoup advertising because of the nature of the sign and what it can do, then that comes to us first to recoup, to recoup our investment.
Okay, so the concessions are operated by the, the city of Wilmington, and so because they're incurring the expense, they get the profits from the gains in concession. So you're not even talking about that at this point.
No, I think there's a sharing there.
Yeah, there's a sharing, because the concessions are run by volunteers from the, from the school.
Well, that's kind of why I brought it up, because in this agreement, there's a twenty percent going to the Hammerheads of the net profit. But if you're not in a contract, but you're saying that process is already in place, that you're, you're getting income from it now. I'm not trying to bog us down, I'm just trying to understand.
It goes to the booster club. Yeah, it, it, when my kids were at New Hanover, we would work in the concession stand. They had one, kind of like a supervisor, who was responsible for everything, making sure you knew what you were supposed to do and all. But beyond that, it was all volunteers from the booster club that came in and actually, with people ringing up on the cash register and all this, that, and the other. And then I never knew exactly what we got for doing that, but we got the...
That generates what they keep most. What you were talking about in the agreement is the Hammerheads, I think, on their games, and what they get from concessions that are sold during their game.
That's right. And that's the only reason I asked it. I didn't know if you had that contract in there to say that we might be doing something similar, but you're not saying that.
That was just the information that was provided from the stadium folks.
All right.
I, I would, I would hope that we would be clear with the city about advertising, because it is a city facility. We do lease the property from the city every year. We pay them, God, I don't know what we pay them, but...
The county.
Well, but, I mean, the city gets paid a sizable chunk of change every year for us using Legion Stadium and all. And, you know, I would want to make sure that, well, I would like for us to have, I'm, I'm not opposed to this, but I would like for us to have some agreement that would clarify that if New Hanover sells advertising, then New Hanover would, after they, we've recouped the twenty-two thousand, would, would get the benefit of that. And not everything going...
Well, I guess we could put that in writing, but that day of the meeting, the discussion was that whatever the entity was that, there that day, whether it be the Hammerheads, Hanover...
There's some kind of semi-pro football team.
Yeah, there's a Tigers, I think it is, there's a semi-pro football team.
Now, that's the other question here. In this thing, it talks about the Wilmington Sharks, which is a baseball team.
Right. And they are...
And they're not, and that's, my note was, you know, this doesn't include Hardy Field, does it?
We did a major, they just did a major upgrade in Hardy Field last year.
So this is the big sign there to the left.
This is supposed to be the Deesels instead of the Sharks. Because they're the ones who use the football field.
Well, we could put that in writing, but it, it was understood in our verbal discussions that the entity that was there would be responsible for selling their own ads, and the revenue generated from those ads would go to that, to that entity. That's why I suggested to Mr. McAdams and Mr. Moore, his A.D., to get together with the Hammerheads, because they seem to be more familiar with what the, that advertising could bring in.
Well, and I, and I support that. I mean, anytime we can, we can recoup the cost of an expenditure like this, I just, I have concerns that it's not in writing at this point.
I agree with that. We need to have a contract.
I, I would, I would like to see something on paper, just as a reassurance that this...
About the, the way the advertising will be, because the cost of the sign's gonna be four ways. So we could certainly add in there, couldn't we, Mr. Bullard, that the advertising, you know, because verbally, that's what was said.
Absolutely.
Yes, I think so.
Well, I think any agreements between the schools also, they should include all the high schools, because there are jamborees there for a lot of the teams. So there would be advertising.
Well, on days like that, yeah, for events like that, they could work that something.
Can I, can I make a clarifying point about that? Ms. Eastep does make a good point, but the jamboree is not owned by the New Hanover County Schools. It's, it's put on and run by a private group. So if there are other things that, that would come into play that other schools happen to be there, but the jamboree, just so we understand, the jamboree is not technically ours.
That's BBNT, isn't it?
Yeah. The scholarship, they're the underwriters.
Yes.
I'm not familiar with the lacrosse one. People can't show up sticks tonight. But the, but the football one's one I know about, so.
Getting puny, huh?
But, yeah, I, I get your point, but that's the big...
It's supposed to be seventy-nine tomorrow, so when do I get sick?
But I think that's something that could be worked out. I think what we could do is, is say, okay, we'll pass this with the understanding, it'll be written in there, that the entity that has the field that day has the advertising revenue. And then if we want to take it a step further, Dr. Holliday, and I guess say that if, for example, I don't know if this would come into play or not, Hanover's playing, say, Ashley, do they split that money with Ashley at that game? Because Ashley, they have the opportunity to do stuff down there that I guess they wouldn't split with Hanover.
The way, the way we, we do that, and the reason Hanover is, is a unique situation is, of course, they don't have their own stuff outside. But if you go to Laney, all the concessions, no matter who they're playing, the concessions go to the Laney folks, any kind of advertising goes to the Laney folks. When you go to their place...
Do they split ticket sales, like if they're, if they're playing?
No, the ticket sales, the ticket sales belong to that school.
So if they're playing Hanover, for example?
Yes, sir.
Every dime goes to Laney?
It goes to Laney if they're there. And if they go to Legion Stadium next year, then, and that's the way it works, you play home and home. Basketball, of course, and, and sports like baseball and softball, you do home and home during the season. Football's one thing you only play once a year, so you do a home and home every two years. So it evens out.
I'd like to amend my motion, and in the motion, ask the board attorney to develop a contract with the information that we have discussed here tonight. Is there a second in my amendment?
Ms. Coe?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Oh, one, one second. Are you saying that we're going to add this after passing this, this...
I'm saying that...
Or are we gonna, are we gonna hold off on this?
We are, we are passing this with the option that the board attorney develop a contract with what we have discussed here at the meeting, to come back to the board to sign the contract, but asking that he drop contract.
There's nothing binding anyone to that, though. I mean, we, we approve this expenditure...
Depending, what's the word I'm looking for?
Conditional upon.
Conditional upon that being accepted by the other entities. Well, the only other entity would be the city.
Right.
I would just assume that we pass a clear bill, a clear, clear motion, twenty-two thousand, and then we can instruct our board attorney. I mean, I'm not gonna make it conditional on the city agreeing anything.
Yeah, the question, I guess the first question is, if there was no revenue, would you still approve the twenty-two thousand?
Yes. Because it's like an expenditure for our school that we would consider, if Laney needed some additional alterations at their, their field. So this is something that's for Hanover.
Yes.
Okay, we vote on the amendment?
Well, we'll make it conditional on the advertising, or just gonna pass with the twenty-two thousand, then instruct our board attorney to draw up a, an agreement?
Well, she's already made the motion, it's been seconded. Unless she withdraws, we gotta vote on her amendment.
Okay.
Which is to make it conditional.
Which is to make it conditional.
A condition to the current contract or after the fact?
No, now, that, that we're passing it, that we're gonna, twenty-two thousand, if I'm understanding this right, twenty-two thousand, plus in, in there, it's gonna be stated that any revenue that comes in when Hanover's using the field is Hanover's revenue. Or if the soccer team from Hanover, or the lacrosse team, any advertising that's displayed during times they're, they're playing belongs... during times they're playing belongs to New Hanover High Schools. Not split with the city, no one else.
Wayne, what is your, what are your thoughts on this, legally speaking?
If you want the details agreed in advance, then I would recommend that you have me prepare a draft and show it to the board and let the board vote on it later. If you're willing to spend the money regardless of whether we ever reach an agreement on the details, then you can approve that tonight. It sounds like some of you are willing to spend the money anyway and others want it conditioned on the details being agreed. So if most of you want the details agreed in advance, then I would recommend you have me draft the contract and bring it back to you for review, for approval.
What's the timeline on this, on the plan for this in terms of getting it up and installing it? Do we have, do we have some time to delay a little bit?
I think so. You've got a meeting on the seventeenth for a student hearing. If that would give me time to have a conversation with the Legion folks and see if that's amenable and bring it back on the seventeenth.
I would just feel more comfortable having something in writing, just from...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to withdraw my motion and amendment.
Okay, so what, we're gonna table it?
Table it.
We're not willing to, okay.
Yeah.
Does Ms. Koval have to withdraw her second?
You withdraw.
I withdraw my second.
All right.
All right, so we'll bring it back.
Oh, wait a minute, I want to understand what's happening.
You've got a full board hearing.
I know we got that.
I'm gonna...
But I don't understand, you know, I understand asking Wayne to draft the document. I, for one, am for putting up the twenty-two thousand, whether the city's agreeable to let us share the revenues or not. And that's what I don't understand. I still think what's going, what we're talking about is having a conditional agreement that says we'll put up twenty-two thousand if we can share, if New Hanover...
But we've, but we've just, but what, you just contradicted yourself because what you're saying is, we're willing to spend the money anyway, and oh, by the way, we'd like to have these conditions added. We have no leverage, then.
Well, I know we have no leverage, but other than the goodwill of the city to say we, and what Don said, that the intent was to, that New Hanover would be able to garner the revenue. If they don't, then they'll continue to put the things up around the edge and they won't have anything going across that board.
I mean, I'm perfectly fine in passing it and I, because I can envision the city not honoring what they told us that day.
Well, if, you know, that's kind of where, what I'm saying.
They wouldn't honor something in writing, though? I mean, you know, they're gonna honor it in a verbal agreement, but they're not gonna honor a written agreement?
Oh, no, I don't think there'd be any problem. I just don't, I mean, I don't really have a problem.
Oh, gosh. That was not me.
That was me.
Okay.
Again?
That was you?
In my experience, Mr. Chair, if I may say, it's always better to get it in writing with all the details specified in advance. Otherwise, you always leave with the potential that there's going to be a disagreement later.
All right, well, can you draw up a document saying, we'll put in like twenty-two, five, whatever it is, with the understanding, put it in there about advertising that is displayed during Hanover, you know, however you phrase that. Would that satisfy everyone?
I would be more comfortable on...
Because there would certainly be no problem with the city.
I'm not trying to, you know, be difficult. I just, I just know that, you know, what's said in, you know, in a meeting may get misconstrued or misunderstood, so I would just feel more comfortable having that in writing, that's all.
Good intentions can be misunderstood, so it's best to have it right.
So we have this, when is it, the seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Okay. Okay.
I thank you all for indulging.
So this would be under old business on the seventeenth, prior to us going to a closed session for the hearing.
Okay.
Okay, item B, driver education funding resolution, appendix I, Dr. Markley.
All right, you have in your packet, coming up on the screen in your packet, was a sample resolution from several counties related to the upcoming driver's ed issue. As you know, unless the legislature steps up and makes a change, we are going to have approximately a three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar shortfall in driver's ed next year because the fee they will allow me to charge, sixty-five dollars, will not cover the cost. So I'm asking the board to adopt this resolution so that we can pass it on to our legislative delegation in hopes of getting some kind of change.
Move for approval.
Second. Comments, questions?
Yes, unfortunately, I have a comment. I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of the state officials that received this. And the only thing that challenged me, trying to put myself there, Mr. Chairman, was the fourth whereas, fifth whereas, sorry, where we give a range of two eighty-two to three forty-seven. And it would seem to me, if we could hone that in, it would mean more to the receiver or even if we put it in an annualized figure.
We actually have the number for our county, because this was a sample from another county. Mary Hazel?
It's closer to three hundred for us. If the actual information interposed for the budget reception, we did insert that number up in the twenty...
Can we say estimated to be three hundred?
Estimated to be closer to three hundred, but you can't remember our account, but it's in there.
We can give you an exact number.
That's all I was after.
It might can be inserted and that would take care of it.
And this is timely because the governor's supposed to release his budget, I think, on Thursday, and all the preliminary stuff that I'm hearing is driver's ed is not in his budget.
Do you have an idea of how many counties have passed this resolution so far?
No, I don't. But I can, we'll email the school board and see if they can get us a number.
My motion is conditional upon having a signature.
That figure inserted. And we had a second, right? Any other comments, questions? All those, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. I mean, have they lost their mind? I mean, I just...
Well, as I've said, I'll take it.
I can't imagine you do this, expect, all these school systems are going to have that kind of shortfall. If we're made to offer something, then we're going to lose money, that we can't...
I mean, all I'm asking for is, I'm not even asking you to refund it, it's simply let me charge the actual cost.
Okay, item C, TPS Publishing Soul Source Resolution, appendix J, Don Brunson.
Request that the board approve the TPS Publishing Soul Source Resolution for Gregory.
Move for approval.
I'm sorry, could you repeat it? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Request that the board approve the TPS Publishing Soul Source Resolution for Gregory.
Thank you. And a motion. Second. Questions? All those, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item D, Learning Perspectives Contract, Amendment Number One, appendix K, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I ask that you approve this contract as it helps support our children who have specific needs in their IEPs and it is cheaper for us to do it this way. We're actually asking that we up a contract that we already have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a question.
Mr. Higgins?
Habitation Services. What does that mean?
Well, it's anything from OT to PT, occupational therapy, physical therapy, those kinds.
Does that mean it happens at the home?
Not necessarily, no. Most of it happens at school.
Oh, okay. I just saw that term being used over and over again. And I had one other question, and that was, the increase is fifty-three thousand dollars for eighteen, what was it, eighteen hundred and sixty-two? How many hours were we getting before?
I can get that for you. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I just saw it goes from fifty-nine thousand, I think.
This is all contingent, there's good questions, but it's all contingent on the actual students with IEPs that require this service and that we don't have the capacity to do that without increasing contracts.
Are we getting any special reimbursement from the state or is this any state money that...
Yes, sir.
Yes, or what?
Yeah, it is part of our, it is actually part of our budget, part of our, but we have to come back to you because it's a contract.
But where's the money, where's the money coming from? Is it coming out of our budget or is it some money that's kind of passing through us to do this?
This particular contract is coming from our Medicaid reimbursements. But we do have other contracted E.C. services that are funded by the state.
Yeah, but this particular one is coming from Medicaid reimbursement.
Medicaid reimbursement, yes.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
So we had a motion, second. Any other questions? All those, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item E, bids for Williston Middle School Kitchen Hood Replacement, appendix L, Bill Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request that the board approve the Kitchen Hood Replacement for Williston.
Move for approval.
Second. Questions? All those, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item F, bids for Johnson Precase Center Asbestos Abatement and Carpet Replacement, appendix M, Bill Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request that the board approve the Asbestos Abatement Carpet Replacement for Johnson.
Mr. Hance, this is such a relatively young school to be having asbestos abatement, isn't it?
It was built in approximately nineteen eighty-five.
And we were still having problems with the asbestos?
It's the mastic underneath. It's not necessarily the tile. There are pieces of tile that have asbestos, but this particular abatement is for the mastic that's underneath, which is the glue that holds some of the tile down.
So what year did we quit using asbestos materials?
I'm not certain of the year that it was actually ceased using it, but it's there, so we have to rate it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? We don't have a motion. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any more questions? All those, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item G, designer selection, the two thousand fourteen Bond Projects, appendix N, Bill Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The superintendent and the selection committee recommend the following firms be selected for the work as indicated. Sidbury Road Complex Renovation, LS Three P Associates, Laney High School Editions and Renovations, Sawyer Sherwood and Associates, Hargit High School Editions and Renovations, BMH Architects, New Hanover High School, the George West Building Renovations, Becker Morgan Group, the Johnson Early Childhood Center Roof Replacement, Tier Con Consultants, and, excuse me, Laney High School Roof Replacements, ATRAS scandalant Laney, REI Engineers, and Johnson HVAC Improvements, Bradley Creek HVAC Improvements, Stanford White Incorporated.
These are a combination of some bond projects. These will be some of the first bond projects we're putting out, as well as a combination of some capital improvement projects.
Okay, that was my question because I knew bond projects didn't include Bradley Creek and the early precases.
No, because it's a combination.
Second. Questions?
Yes. Mr. Shale? Are you entering into contracts with all of those folks with this approval or is it subject to appropriation?
This is the selection, and we'll bring back the contracts for you. This is the selection of the designers based on the interviews that we had with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Opposed? Pass this. Item H, Audit Contract with Cherry Beckert, LLP, appendix O, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend approval of the audit contract with Cherry Beckert for audit services for the year ended June thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Move for approval.
Second. Questions? All those, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Item thirteen, call to the audience for our non-agenda items. We've had two individuals to sign up. Brandy Mathis. Okay, Lisa Akins, or Akins? Akins, I'm sorry.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I know it's getting very late. My name is Lisa Akins and I'm here to speak on behalf of my incredibly smart son who was diagnosed with dyslexia last year. James is in the second grade and has been struggling in school since kindergarten. He has ten more years to go in New Hanover County School System. James knows that he is dyslexic. This label of dyslexia has given him comfort in knowing that there are other people in the world like him that struggle with the same issues that he does. He knows that he has many other great talents. It is two thousand and fifteen. It is time to stop avoiding the subject and start using the word dyslexia. My son's school seems afraid of this word. They have tried to avoid it at every corner. Even as an A-ranked school, they are not equipped with trained and knowledgeable teachers to educate my son properly. One in five individuals in the United States are dyslexic. I have provided each of you with a packet of information that will provide you with more details and the points that I would like to be addressed. Under Policy seven one four zero, the Board of Education is charged with maintaining the system of special education for students with disabilities. First, I am requesting that the board seek out training for their employees to assist them in the identification of children with dyslexia. It is the duty of the schools under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act to identify children with disabilities. Children that are not properly identified are more likely to suffer from depression, drop out of school, and commit crimes as juveniles and adults. Secondly, I am requesting that the board seek out a way to put the identification of dyslexia as a subgroup under the category of specific learning disability on a student's IEP. As it stands now, the only choice under the disability category is specific learning disabled. The omission of the term dyslexia enables educators to use methods of instruction that are neither valid nor helpful to their students and provides no real means for tracking the numbers and assessing what continuing education and requirements new hires might need. And in closing, I am requesting that New Hanover County Schools hire special education teachers with Orton-Gillingham training. Orton-Gillingham is a language-based, multi-sensory method of teaching which is proven to work for dyslexic students. Through my correspondence with New Hanover County Special Education Department, I have learned that the schools have the materials, but that the teachers do not have sufficient training in their use. This lack of trained and qualified educators in this day and age is definitely a sad state of affairs for our children. I hope you will take the time to think about the dyslexic children in New Hanover County and consider them in your future policymaking. It is time to wake up and fix the system that has been broken for far too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Item fourteen, closed session.
No need.
Item fifteen, under correspondence, any correspondence? Mrs. Eastep, we'll start with you. Any correspondence you'd like to share? Mr. Shale? Ms. Koval?
Let's see, is this, have I mentioned I'm co-chair of the Academic Standards Review Commission? Did you all know that?
It was announced.
I think I saw an email or something. Tell us about it. Enlighten us further.
Absolutely. I'm going to toot my horn, my own horn a little bit here. The co-chair of the standards commission had to step down. She's had, she's got some very difficult situations going on in Forsyth County and some personal issues, so she was unable to continue in that position. So we had at our last meeting, which ended up being a conference call due to weather, we had an election essentially, and I was elected as her replacement. So I'm very excited about that and...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kavanaugh? Mr. Higgins, correspondence? Ms. Nichols?
No, thank you.
Well, I've already shared mine. I just wanted, I thought it was appropriate. I was thinking about with the American Legion, with Private Shepard, doing that under correspondence, but I thought, well, it might be more appropriate to do that at the school and, let's see. Next on the agenda, our announcements, item sixteen. The Budget Development Committee of the New Hanover County Board of Education will Committee of the New Hanover County Board of Education will meet on Tuesday, March tenth, from four to six, room three-oh-one, the admin building on Carolina Beach Road. Item B, the Board of Education will meet on Wednesday, March the eleventh, at four P.M. in this board center here for a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three-eighteen, eleven-A-one, and one-fifteen, C, four-oh-two.
Is that for personnel?
Uh, yeah, those...
Yeah, I thought we were meeting at the...
But that one's student, and one of the seventeenth is personnel.
Student discipline.
And that's a central office.
Yeah, this is student discipline, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, item C, what we've all been waiting for, the highlight of the year, the New Hanover County Board of Education will attend best foot forward on Friday, March thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at seven-thirty on the campus of New Hanover High School. D, the Budget Development Committee of the New Hanover County Board of Education will meet on Tuesday, March seventeenth, room three-oh-one at the admin building. E, Board of Education will meet for a special meeting on Tuesday, March seventh, seventeenth, at six P.M., room three-oh-one at the administration building. The only item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, excuse me, one forty-three, three-eighteen, eleven-A-one, one-fifteen, C, three-nineteen, and three-twenty-one. Excuse me. Item F, the Advisory Council for Exceptional Students hosting its second parent forum, March nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, at Ashley High School from six to eight P.M. And the New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the superintendent's student advisory breakfast on Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, at eight-thirty A.M. here in the board center. And the next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, April the seventh, at five-thirty in the boardroom of the education center. And I think, Ms. Nichols, you have a policy committee?
We have a policy committee meeting before that at four o'clock.
On April the seventh?
Yes.
Any other announcements that we need to make?
Head start, council will meet in Spencer Building, March the nineteenth, at six o'clock.
Also, this will be Williston's one-hundredth year, and Dr. Oates is working on some things with Ms. Quattlebaum to celebrate that coming up towards the, the end of the year, along with the Alumni Association.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Great. Any other announcements? Ms. Kavanaugh?
I move adjourned.
Is there a second? All those, favor please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Held up well, huh?